I hate starting without everybody here. Good morning, everyone. I'll officially call to order the
Uh-oh.
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 No, that was me. I apologize, that was me.
Did I hear an echo?
Yes.
Oh, it didn't work.
It was me. I was calling that, sorry.
Officially called to order the regular board meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, February 8th, 2022. We start with these introductory remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2021-43. In an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing, the public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. The meeting is being streamed live on the district's website. Public comment, as stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda may provide comments in person at the meeting or via Zoom. Did we have any of those yet?
I have not received it. I do have an individual on the line, so I will just ask them if they would like to speak.
Yeah, okay. We'll have another chance. And we do have board members attending online, so I'll make sure to call on them directly. All of our roll call, all of our votes will be by roll call. And please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada is absent, and I do not show him on the line, but I will note if he joins us. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. And Director Nelson, I will note as well, I do not see him online, so if he does happen to join, I will note that for the record.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. Who wants to close that? What if Peter comes?
You can come in the front door.
Oh.
Originating, sir.
Yeah, gotta secure the premises. All right, fair enough. Secure. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda? Not aware of any. Nope, hearing none. Again, public comment, if anyone from the public wishes to comment, now is the time. We'll also have the opportunity, as we only have a couple of action items, but as we get to those action items. And we don't see anybody wishing to make comment at this time.
I just do have one attendee, Ms. Rodriguez. If you would like to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand feature or on any other item on the agenda, and I will call on you. I don't see any of this.
So we're not getting any action there. All right. Onto the consent calendar, items 5A through B. They loaded it up this time. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. All right, I'll wait for it.
Second.
Okay, thank you. A roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
And Director Aguilar.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And the, so the consent calendar items are approved. We did have two items of underwritten communications that had been resolved. And so moving into action items 8A, PSA with six firms for on-call environmental consultants. William Patterson, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, we have a requested action for the board. We're recommending that the Board of Directors approve and authorize the general manager to execute professional service agreements with six firms. Chambers Group, Ecore Consulting, Environmental Science Associates, NV5, and Ultra Systems, and Wood Environment, and Infrastructure Solutions. The six PSAs will cover worked activities on various environmental tasks for CBWD projects located throughout CBWD's service boundaries for a two-year period with options for three one-year extensions. Essentially, what we're doing here is renewing our on-call environmental consultant contracts. The previous contracts will expire in March, and these firms provide services to CBWD to keep CBWD in environmental compliance. We flew a proposal, request for proposal, sorry, on Planet Bids on October 14th through December 9th, and we received 18 proposals. Those proposals were scored with guidance from the finance purchasing staff for, to ensure compliance with the procurement policy. There were a total of four scoring team members that are part of a committee, evaluation committee, and the, those were independently scored, and those scores were then compiled into a final scoring determination. As a result, six firms were selected to establish PSAs with CBWD. This represents an increase in three on-call consulting firms available to CBWD at any time. And this should be a way that CBWD will increase its competitiveness for individual task orders that are requested to these firms and result in not only ensuring that the correct expertise is needed on each project, but also lower costs.
Okay.
With that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
This is something we've done in the past, right? This is
Yes.
standard practice.
Yep.
Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't quite see on my screen, but if Jeff is there, can he address the question that I raised about the conflict between the RFP and the recognition, please?
Sure. The question had been raised about the RFP said that the district was looking to retain a limit of five firms, and as you see, there were six firms that are being recommended. And so Section 8.2 of the RFP says that the district has the right to reserve the right to accept any or all proposals that are received that are in response to this RFP. And being that this is not a public courts contract, there are, there's more flexibility in terms of awarding professional services contracts, especially of the on-call nature. So because the district does reserve the right in the RFP to accept or reject any or all proposals received, and because staff has determined that there are six qualified firms, and that that's in the best interest of the district to do so, the board could consider awarding six firms the contract today if wished.
Thank you, Jeff, for that explanation. Appreciate that. I have no other questions. I'll move approval.
And just to note that we are on item 8A, and Director Nelson has joined us in person. So good morning. I'll second. Motion and a second. Any other discussions? No? Then we'll go to a roll call vote.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, William.
Thank you.
All right, and then 8B, authorized funding for the, our share of the preliminary design, environmental planning, and pre-construction costs for Delta Conveyance Project for the next two years. Robert, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I think a lot of this, the members of the boards have already seen before, and I will move fairly quickly through this, recognizing that we have a little bit of a time constraints. But, you know, do please feel free to slow me down if anything, you know, isn't completely clear. Before we get too far into the program, I'd like to introduce Graham Bradner again from the Design Construction Authority. I've been working with him fairly closely, and as well as DWR and state water contractors, you know, for last, you know, two or three years on the pre-design efforts. So the request in front of you today for consideration are threefold. First is to provide the second two years of funding for 2023 and 2024 for about $7.365 million for our share of the planning efforts for the Delta Conveyance Project. And there's a slight amendment that we need to make or ask the board to consider to make to the Class 8 member agencies' election procedures for the DCA Board of Directors, and then also make determination that these actions are exempt from CEQA. So really, kind of cut to the chase on the first item. So we've, we've actually considered these costs and included these costs as part of the state water project tax discussions from 2020. So if you approve this, there will be no further fiscal impacts, you know, beyond what the board has already taken. So some of this, you already know, just to reemphasize, the state water project system we've been in since 1963, since we signed on. And the area that we're talking about is the area in the delta that's kind of, you know, highlighted in the big circle, circular area. And it's just a good reminder that, you know, this water actually conveys over 700 miles from the point of origin at Lake, from Orville all the way down to Lake Paris, and the board took some actions on Paris Dam last year. So delta vulnerabilities are well documented, but it is a very ecologically sensitive area, a lot of endangered species, which kind of hampers, I think, the movement of water. So these two areas that I've kind of highlighted in red, we refer to North Delta and South Delta, and these are the areas where some of the construction activities will be taking place. So, you know, some of the areas, some of the issues that we're talking about, sea level rise, and then, you know, more catastrophic events, you know, due to potential earthquakes, which has the likelihood of allowing seawater to kind of intrude into this freshwater body. So just kind of reemphasize, you know, obviously, I think for the contractors, we're very interested in water supply reliability, which is bullet number three, but there are other benefits that, you know, the project is looking at overall in terms of how to deal with climate resiliency, seismic, and operational resiliency. Unless the board has any questions on this, I'll just go through this fairly quickly. So this, this slide, I think the board has seen before, but I think it's worthwhile just reemphasizing, you know, for not just CBWD's table A's, but I think for all of the contractors' table A's. You know, there's a market decline after the Wanger decision in 2007 in the state water project liabilities. I think since the inception of when we started receiving water in 1973 to 2007, I think the average liability was about 88%. It's since declined down to 45%, including last year, which was a whopping 5% allocation. So clearly, you know, there's a lot of contributing factors, but, you know, the question is, how do we reclaim, you know, back some of the lost percentage? So I'll just go through this one really quickly. This is just some hydrology data that kind of classifies the different water year types. And unless the board really wants me to go in a lot of detail, the bottom line here is that the SAC Valley, where we get our water from, actually, the majority of the water deliveries occur in the wet and above normal years, which occurs in the historic period between 73 to 2020, about 46% of the time, when you kind of add these numbers up in the green. Since the Wanger decision, that number has declined down to 21%. And, you know, some variability obviously is expected, but still, I think the pie charts on the right kind of show that we get 40% of our water in the last, you know, 13 years in 21% of the time versus, you know, 80% of the time, which only gets you 60% of the water. So, you know, this is an opportunity, I think, you know, for the tunnel to capture some high water year flows.
Robert.
Yes, sir.
On that one, in the gray area, so, so the blue area is wet and above normal, the gray area is below normal, what's the DNC?
Dry. Oh, I'm sorry. Below normal, dry, and critical. Okay. Apologize, yeah.
Okay, no, that's good, thanks.
Yep. So these are, you know, just typical SAC Valley index figures, and, you know, I don't want to give you a lecture on, you know, what that means, but, you know.
They have Mimi. I got it.
Weather is drier.
Yeah.
From left to right. Okay, so the tunnels, the tunnels, and now the tunnel has had a long history, and certainly goes back, you know, before 2013, but 2013 was, you know, the start of my involvement in the whole process. So it was always kind of envisioned as two-tunnel process, and I don't need to get into a lot of history. I think, you know, this board has taken a lot of actions through the past, but, you know, the most current iteration was a Cal Water Fix, which was still envisioned as two-tunnel project, and that involved state water project or state water contractors, as well as the Central Valley contractors. So in 2019, Governor Newsom withdrew support for Cal Water Fix when he assumed in his stated the state address back in January. And then in May of that year, the support for Cal Water Fix was completely withdrawn, you know, from DWR, so that really pivoted, you know, the direction of the project. So we find ourselves right now, the current tunnel project is one tunnel, it's about $16 billion. That number has not changed since the last time I came in front of this body, and now it's envisioned as 100% state water project commitments. And so what does it look like for CBWD? So the previous action, which I came in front of this body in November 2020, you provided the authorization for $5.5 million, which included about $1.24 million from the leftover funds from Cal Water Fix, you know, for the first two years of planning efforts. So from '21 to '24 is envisioned to be the planning and pre-design phase, after which time we should get our permits, which solidifies the data for, for the construction activities. So this body authorized the first two years of funding. I made a commitment to come back to this board for the second two years, as well as to report on the progress. So that's what I'm doing now. So you can see, like, the commitments for 2023 and 2024 is about seven, is the balance of seven point, almost 7.4 million. So our total commitment is 12.9, as gauged against a total project commitment of $341 million roughly for all the contractors, and this includes met and current. So this just kind of gives you the brief timeline of, you know, CBWD's, you know, board actions related to the tunnels, as well as the, you know, the current tunnel. And I'm not going to go through and read this, but our latest action was back in 2020, and you can see the whole suite of different actions that were taken. So today is just simply a request to kind of continue the funding that we started back in 2020. So just kind of remind the board, you know, what the, what our dollars are going to buy us. So the graphic on the left shows the, you know, all the structures that are associated with this, and when we say a tunnel project, I think what gets lost in the conversation sometimes is that there are other receiving and discharge facilities that are needed. So the receiving bodies are like the intakes and the discharge are the four bays that discharge into the California Aqueduct. On the right, I think I presented these numbers back in 2020 when I made the request, and I think it's just worth reiterating that, you know, the actual construction costs are about $8.4 billion, so the balance are kind of tied up in the contingencies administration, environmental remediation. You will note that the contingency is a pretty hefty chunk, is $3.71 million out of the total, which is, I think it's like over 40, I think it's like over 40% of the total construction cost, I believe. So, you know, this is a high percentage as compared to some other, you know, better well-defined projects, but given the stage that we're at, I think, you know, we had a long discussion, I think with DCA as well as the, you know, DWR, and one of the goals of this phase is kind of see if we can, you know, shrink that number down a bit to get more certainty as we go through and find out the soil conditions and so on. So our percentage, just to reiterate, was 3.78% of the total, and the board last approved this back in November 2020. So supply benefits modeling, I'll just breeze through this fairly quickly. So there are five different trends that were looked at, kind of covering everything from, you know, what potential limitations there are on operations, both on North and South deltas, and then sea level rise as well as seismic breaches. So these are numbers that are projected to occur, gauged against CBWD's 138,350 acre feet of entitlements. And you can see in the blue, this is without the Delta Conveyance and future projections. And with Delta Conveyance, you know, there's, there's the ability to convey during the, you know, the nice wet years. So just to, you know, in percentages, you know, the DCP provides up to about 26% more yield against the baseline, and then if you add climate change or, you know, some of these other scenarios that we don't really know what's going to happen in the future, the benefits are anywhere between 6% to 76%. I think it's worth noting that we haven't done any more modeling, you know, since 2020. I think most of our efforts have been concentrated on getting the permits and so on, but I think these numbers are still, still stand. So there's a lot of agencies interacting in this project. So on the contractor side, you've got DWR, you've got the Design Construction Authority, and then, you know, from the state level, we have to go to the Water Board, we have to go to Fish and Wildlife Agency, as well as the Delta Scholarship Council for these various regulatory issues that they have to give approval for. And then on the federal side, we have to go through reclamation, also the federal Fish and Wildlife, as well as Army Corps of Engineers for various permits. So it's, it's a, it's a large project. And DWR and DCA is acting on behalf of the contractors with our input to interact with these agencies. So with a project this size, obviously, you've got varying interests, you know, so for the contractors, again, just to, you know, reemphasize, I mean, we're, you know, interested in a reliable, sustainable, economical water supply, but you've got DWR, community regulators, and other stakeholders' interests as well. So the question is, how do you kind of find that, you know, common, you know, area intersection? So I think, you know, the way that, you know, to kind of move ahead with this project is minimize opposition and challenges, and obviously involve the stakeholder, you know, make sure that we do our alternatives analysis, whatever we come up with has the least amount of impact. That doesn't mean no impact, that just means the least amount, and then the pathway to success is in permitting. So I want to show a little bit graphic of what our dollars bought us in 2021 and 2022. So we kind of talked about the importance of stakeholder engagement. You know, the DCA has been very involved in this. This was a two-year-long process with various stakeholders in the delta, from the community to agriculture, as well as tribal interests. And based on these, you know, discussions, I think, you know, they were monthly, and, you know, there were projects adjustments made, so it was a beneficial exercise. They were actually able to reduce the site footprint, and then, you know, some other transportation considerations during construction, and then expanding the road and rail service. So I think it was definitely a time well spent on that. Another big unknown that drives the contingency is the geotechnical activities. I think the area underneath the delta is, you know, while there are some data, I wouldn't say that was a complete set of data, and without a complete set of data, I think the contractors would have a hard time kind of giving a firm estimate, and they'll, they'll, you know, have the ability to inflate their estimates to, you know, cover the risks. So the activities, besides reviewing the historical data, there's actually, you know, 41 subsurface and cone penetration tests, and I showed a little picture here, I'm not sure whether that's completely accurate, but, you know, these, you know, they drill into the soil and actually do some soundings to determine, you know, the densities. And really, what we're trying to do is improve the construction estimates on this. And then lastly is the CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, activities. So this is environmental, and, you know, I showed the, kind of like the ladder or the stairs, staircase that leads up to getting the final environmental docks. So part of that is do alternatives analysis, you know, figure out, okay, you know, what kind of alignments make sense, what kind of alternatives, you know, provides the least amount of impact. And, you know, the result is to produce a draft environmental impact report, which is the precursor or a part of the permitting process. So this is what we've accomplished in 2021, 2022. I'd like to highlight, you know, the project alternatives here, and just kind of covering it very quickly, we've got basically two major alignments, the central, which is showing red, and then the eastern alignment, which is showing blue, and then the Bethany alternative is a subset, I think, of the eastern alignment. You know, you can see the offshoot in green. So the Bethany alternative is a new analysis, I think, you know, this was, you know, I think with good development. It provides the least impact to wetlands and waters under, you know, the various cultural and resource environmental impacts that we have to do. And so, you know, this will be advanced as the CEQA proposed project, you know, when the EIR does come out. So with all that said, what are we planning for '23 and '24, you know, with the $7-plus million that we're requesting? We want to finalize the EIR and address any kind of comments that come along. The consultations, we, you know, kind of talked about with all the state and federal agencies. We definitely want to advance the engineering design on this, which finalized the basis of design report, as well as complete the 30% design, which gives you a more robust look at what the estimate, cost estimate is going to be. And then to do, lastly, is the environmental mitigation, maybe start some looks at land acquisition, right-of-ways, and then kind of continue the stakeholder outreach. So that's, that kind of covers it for the, for the ass, for the money. The second part of this request is amend the Class 8 DCA board term. And so the prior action from this, so the DCA board is, is made up of representatives from different agencies, Class 8, which CBWD is a part of, you can see all the different agencies on the left and right-hand sides. Two seats were added for Class 8 members, you know, on this body, and I was fortunate enough to be one of the representatives on the board. The board term was originally ran on a calendar year, January to December, and after further input, I think from the DCA attorneys, I think there was some desire to maybe align this to be on fiscal year, which is the rest of the DCA board's board terms, they're from July to June. So this is all we're asking for, is just to make a minor adjustment or sign amended MOU to reflect that change. And there's no cost associated with this item. And then lastly is the exemption from CEQA, and I don't need to go through and read this, it's not a project, so this, this has been vetted through the attorneys as well as our internal environmental group. So to wrap it up, here's the requested actions, so I'd be happy to, I know I went through it fairly quickly, hopefully I didn't miss anything.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the other contractors. Are we hearing of any pushback or anyone trying to jump out of the deal now?
Great question, sir. So the reason why we're coming in front of this board right now is because DWR wants an answer, you know, by April, first of April, to prepare their statement of charges. We've had some pretty in-length, in-depth discussions with other contractors, and the answer is no. I haven't heard anybody saying, no, we're not going to participate.
Okay.
So I think, you know, we're right in the midst of this, you know, board cycle. Some agencies don't have to go back to their boards because they already got the four-year approval, like Metropolitan, for instance.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Is the CEQA exemption, is that just for the board term, or is that for the money? What is the CEQA exemption?
I think it's overall, that none of these actions that you're taking or approving, you know, are part of the project definition as, you know, covered under CEQA.
For the planning stage.
For the planning stage.
For this particular planning stage. Yeah, so what I didn't get is like, we're right in the middle of CEQA, right? And we're, we're looking to finalize the EIR, go out with comments and so forth, so aren't we in CEQA? And so why are we exempting it from? So I just didn't understand the bureaucracy there. Maybe Jeff can help me, I don't know. Steve, were you going to say something?
Steve Abbott.
Good morning. You are in both planning and design phase, so I want to make clear that those parts of the project are also exempt from SEQA. DWR has adopted bond resolutions to cover planning and design costs as well as construction costs. The construction bonds can't be issued until SEQA is complied with. We had a validation action trial in SEQA, which proceeded in December. Judge Earl confirmed that planning and design costs are completely exempt from SEQA, and that no compliance is required, and I just want to make sure that we're giving the notice of exemption so that we don't face a SEQA lawsuit.
I'll buy that, if the judge is telling us that we're planning and designing or exempt from SEQA, I'll buy that. So, good. And the board term, Robert, you're elected, who elects you?
The, so as a representative from the CVWD, the other Class 8 contractors, we go through, you know, like an annual election process.
Okay. And so probably once you're in, unless you're really messing up, they want to keep you around, right?
Well, I mean, that would be the hope, but maybe not the expectation.
Okay.
All right.
Is there, is the governor on board with this? To my knowledge, we've asked that question of his representative, Carla Nemeth, who's the director of DWR, and I think the answer is yes. I mean, I, you know, no personal conversations with the governor, but, you know, through his office, you know, this is part of his water resiliency plan, as a sites.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move approval of both the money aspects and the resolution to adjust the board term and to the exemption of SEQA, as stated by the staff.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Robert, the, I hear an echo here, but anyway, the Water Fix credit of a million two that's referred to in the report, is that for the entire project or is for this planning phase, that credit of a million two? What does that apply to?
Yes, sir. Sorry if that wasn't completely clear. That million two applied towards the first two years of the planning efforts, and to my knowledge, I think that money has already been expended. So when I came to the board in November 2020, these were, you know, kind of separate actions. I requested, you know, 4.2, you know, about $14.2 million in new funding, but DWR was holding our Cal Water Fix credits and wanted to find out, okay, what did the contractors want to do with that? You know, apply it towards Cal Water, I'm sorry, Cal, toward the DCP, or they want to get a refund and, you know, pay that, but bottom line is, we owed about $5.5 million total for that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I forgot to ask you, Robert, is 3.78%, is that strictly CVWD or does that include DWA?
No, sir, it's actually CVWD's portion.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so at that 3.78%, we're 12.8 million, and so this total effort's like $400 million. Are we paying more because we're classes?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what I'm completely following your question.
Oh, so if we're 3.78%.
Right.
And we're paying over the, these four years, $12.8 million.
Right.
All right, so if I do the division of that, it comes up to a little over $400 million for this planning and design effort. Does that sound right?
Okay. I think the total is 341, but maybe, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure whether I have a ready answer for you or not on that. I just know that, you know, the 341 was what was provided officially, you know, from DWR.
Okay, so as a Class 8, are we picking up a, is our share, are we paying more because we're in a certain class?
No, it's definitely a great question. I didn't put it in here because this slide, you know, the slide deck was probably long enough, and I covered this back in 2020. So I think our Table A share is something like 3.3%. So you've got the north, you know, the five north of delta exemptions, and then I think you have a few, the south of delta folks who are out.
Got it, that makes sense.
I'm sorry, yeah.
The above delta guys aren't going to pay any.
Right, right, right.
That makes a difference.
Yeah, sorry I didn't include that in here.
Oh, you can, there was a, it's big.
Remember those guys. All right, so we're looking for a second to Director Nelson's motion to approve.
Second?
All right, there's a second from Director Aguilar, and let's do a roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming in, Graham. All right, so what I'd like to do is, let's adjourn to closed session. We still have some items nine and 10, and if we could take those after we reconvene, we'll adjourn into closed session at this time to consider the items 11A through J on the agenda. It'll probably be a pretty long closed session, then we'll reconvene, we'll report out and take the remainder of the agenda in open session. Might as well knock it out if we can. Knock it out today if we can. Just hold it here. Good, all right, good to go. So welcome back, the regular meeting is hereby reconvened, we have no reportable action from the closed session, and we do have, still have agenda items nine and 10. So let's see if we can get through some of this. 9A is board member general comments, do we have any of those?
No comments.
No comments, John.
Okay, thank you, I will also have no comments. January 4th meeting, Agua Caliente mediation Zoom, we had a self-explanatory, I was on there, I believe Director Strata was on there too, just preparing some of the strategies on Agua Caliente. January 17th, discussing with Jim Chang, Director Nelson, Assistant Jim.
Oh, yes, yeah, so this was a meeting to discuss some Colorado River supplies about potential outlooks on 2022 and 2023 supplies going forward, and how CVWD may potentially participate in the 500-plus plan that's been proposed by the lower basin to conserve water in support of elevation of Lake Mead. So it was some background information and went well.
Good, all right. January 26th, we had a Gulf and Water Task Force Zoom meeting, and I was on there along with Director Bianco, I would say very standard affair at the meeting. Go ahead.
I'll take the next one on January 26th, I as well. I had a meeting with Chris Harris, as well as another number of other meetings as well, but just to discuss Colorado River board issues, and we were specifically looking at in-person meetings for the Colorado River Board.
Okay, thanks. See, John Aguilar, you had Legislative Committee?
Yes, Vice President Strata and other staff members attended the meeting, we had our usual legislative update from our state and state team, reported at the federal level with that there was the Build Back Better legislation, and it is still pretty caught and looking to shut that out, so nothing yet. And then state level, next week is the drop dead date for submitting new bills, and so we're planning on having our legislative teams do a presentation to the board sometime in the next two months.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, go ahead, Peter, you got the next two.
Let's see, we're on January 27th. I had questions about return flows that Coachella receives from the Bureau of Reclamation and Accounting, and I wanted to get a better idea of how those worked and where the return flows went, and so Robert Chang asked Steve Abbott to sit in on that meeting, and it was very informative and realized that the return flows are fully accounted for through the Bureau of Reclamation. Then the next one, on January 28th, Gene Shawcroft from Utah organized seven basin states, U.S. Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation principals meeting on a Zoom, and we talked about next steps after the holidays and moving forward, updating each other on the Upper Basin states' DROA operations, and what the Upper Basin had just released about how they're addressing Lake Powell's decline, and we updated the Upper Basin on the 500-plus plan, and we got a dismal hydrology report for the last month.
Were there any other meetings we need to report on?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
So moved.
Aye.
Okay, watch the second, roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, general manager reports.
Yes, sir, just quickly, we've had about 42% of staff contract COVID and recover. We've got about 75% of staff that have shown proof of vaccination. We've got about six people off work right now because of COVID-related situations, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Counsel report?
I will pass today, Mr. President.
All right, and I don't see any department people here, so I'm guessing that without any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.